We'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you would take the roll call.
Mr. Braun.
Present.
Mr. Moore. Ms. Pace-Snoke.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Seibacher.
Present.
Mr. Shiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
And Mr. Stone.
Present.
Seven council members present, one absent.
Thank you. We have Pastor Bruce Williams here to do our invocation.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, I am grateful on behalf of our community and our home to give you thanks for those that serve this community at every level, in our city, Lord, our administrators and department heads, and all of those that work on our streets, our public safety officers, fire and police, and all those that make our life at peace and a presence of joy each day. I want to remember the firefighters injured in Farmington, Maine, yesterday, five critically and one killed in action, and two police officers shot in America today, New York and Georgia. This could be any nation in the world, any city in our nation. Lord, I pray for those that have fallen, and I pray, Lord, for strength for our servants and for those that serve the people all across this country. I pray for our men and women in uniform who serve this nation, defend the Constitution and the flag. Very difficult and dangerous time for them, especially serving in the Middle East. We're free because of the likes of all of this and these throughout our history. I'm really grateful for the participation in this session tonight. Our gallery is nearly full, and I'm grateful for those who participate in the city's life, work and business. I pray for this session tonight for our mayor and councilpersons and administrators as this session is held, and I pray for the public's participation. It adds much to the life and work of our community. I continue to pray for those who are part of the city family who need your daily care and maintenance. That would include Chief Kowelk, Chief Myers, Mr. Moore, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, and anyone else within our city family who needs your touch each day. I ask your blessings on this session and all who share, those who lead it and the discussions and decisions that are made, that they be pleasing to you. We pray all this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. Attention, salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Okay, at this time, we will accept comments from visitors. If you would limit your comments to five minutes or less and give us your name and I think we know this guy.
My name's Richard Vaughn. I live at 1416 King Woods Drive in here in town. I'm here tonight to urge the city council to support the upcoming vote on the new rec center. I participated in part of that. We had the citizens voice their opinion on that and vote for apartheid, and I think the council should support that vote that we had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
I knew we would see you. My name's Chris Garrett. I live at 1009 West Avenue here in Fulton, Missouri. I currently serve as chairman of the park advisory board, and I'm just here today to thank this council administration, the park board, the work from the park and rec department, specialist director, for all the tireless effort and everything else that's gone into it. There's been a lot of work, a lot of time that's gone into that, and a lot of sacrifices. And I just wanted to say thank you to all those that have supported that. And of course, we urge you, we get this pushed through tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pastor.
Anyone else that would wish to say a few words?
I'm Wanda Jane Hall, and I live at 150 King Street in Fulton. I've moved to Fulton 53 years ago and passed, and I'm not a Callowee-ian, but I've always thought that the best thing that ever happened to Fulton in all the time that I was here and all the time in my 39 years in teaching for the city of Fulton was the building of this city hall. Because I watched all the changes that went through and all the arguments they had and everything that went through to building this, and I was always so proud to bring my classroom through and to tour it and to let, and this council should be so proud of that accomplishment. So I am here tonight to see if you will begin another great and important project, which is the Community Recreational Center and also the softball-baseball complex, which has a dear meaning to me. I have served on the Parks and Recreation Board for, I think it's 22 to 23 years now. That's longer than I've served on anything else on committees. And I did that because I love kids and I wanted to work for their recreational needs and to see the things. So in those 23 years, lots of projects and proposals have come up through the park board and been presented, but this is truly the most important one, and it means the most. The part of the baseball complex, one of the reasons I stayed on the park board is because if it's in its present plan, will be in my front yard. Literally, I walk out of my front yard and the ballpark begins, and I want to see in my lifetime, hopefully, that accomplished. And I think if you vote tonight to start moving the dirt, that would be a move in the right direction that I could look out my window every morning and watch and see. It's really important, all these projects, and most of the people I've talked to have said, money is the big important issue. But I look at all the things that the council has accomplished in the past. Some of the people didn't want a golf course, and now we have Tanglewood, and it's almost home free, and we have the city hall, and we have a lot of accomplishments. And I know it will take a lot of money and hard work, and you say, I don't want to go that for 20 years or 15 years down the road to pay for something. But we do that every day when we buy a new home, and we don't say, oh, I can't do that. And so as the council, I think the time is right now for all of you to start this project. And you may, and hopefully you can, this can be your legacy on the council, that you started a project and that you could see it through to the end. And I know we have administration that has creative ideas on how to fund things. We own lots of property that if we're not going to use, that could help on funding it. And it can be done if you make this your goal. And so because I love kids and everything, I hope you'll vote to start the project, not know all the answers of how it's going to be finished, but the citizens of the city said yes, they voted for the sales tax to start in financing it, and I know you can find a way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not seen anyone come forward, we'll move on. Next up on the agenda is our consent agenda. Council members may choose to remove an item for discussion prior to approving the agenda. The two items we do have are approval of an event request from First Christian Church for their annual fall festival on Saturday, September 21st, from 8:00 to 4:00, to allow the closure of Seventh Street from Market to Court. And this has been reviewed, I think, by Chief Myers and approved. The other item was an appointment of Jennifer O'Donley to the tourism board as our city slash county representative. She would begin serving at January 1st, so...
She's actually, just a quick correction, she's going to begin serving now, and then she'll start a brand-new term effective January 1st. So she's going to finish that complete one.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda passes. We don't have any unfinished business tonight. For new business, we'll start with, the members of the Callaway 200 Committee will present to provide an update on their accomplishments and planned events and to request additional
Thank you for having us tonight. I know you have a full agenda, and I'm going to be brief, but if you have questions, feel free to ask them. On November 25th, I should introduce myself. I'm Susan Crum. I live at 809 Gross Place here in Fulton, and I'm co-chair of Callaway 200 with John Bell, who is sitting back here with me, and we have several other members of the committee present as well. On November 25th, 1820, Callaway became an official county in what was still a territory. We weren't even Missouri officially yet. You're well aware that our Callaway 200 Committee has been in the planning and fundraising stage for one and a half years. We hope you have been noticing the Callaway 200 logo, and in November, the celebration will officially begin. Our first event will be November 15th, 2019. That's our kickoff gala, which is featuring the Joe McBride Jazz Ensemble, a Fulton boy who is coming back home to perform for us. That's a ticketed event at Meadow Lake Country Club. May 29th through 31st in 2020, the Callaway 200 Celebration Weekend will be held, we hope, in downtown Fulton, and we have not yet officially requested that, but we, at our last meeting, decided that that really is going to be, we think, the best place to hold that celebration with your permission. And we will come back with a formal proposal at the correct time. In November 2020, we will be holding a closing event near the Katy Trail, just south of Old Summit, and that's going to be a joint celebration by Callaway Coal and Boone Counties, and that one's still very much in the formative stages. We will also bring a Callaway 200 presence to annual community events throughout the county throughout 2020. Jeff Stone joined our committee after we met with you in March, and we've really benefited from his active participation and helpful ideas. We welcome the input of everyone on the council as we progress through our planning and our activity. When we visited with you in the past, you wanted to know how and where we are securing funding, because of course, we got started with a lot of interested people and zero financial backing. The financial information in your packet shows you our progress as of August 8th. That's our financial report and our budget, and that is a two-year budget. I can add some information to that. The committee has talked with the county commissioners, with the city of Avos, with Kingdom City, and tonight, a member just of the summit board while we were here. We have secured $2,000 from Kingdom City. That does not show on your report because it just came in, and Callaway County's 2019 pledge is $10,000, which matches yours. Major donor funds from businesses and individuals continue to come in and have recently topped $20,000. So we're well on our way to our budget there. The Henry Rifle Raffle is going on now until the gala, when the drawing will be held. Gala ticket sales are going very well, and we expect that event will probably sell out, and those tickets are being handled by the chamber. The Callaway Tourism Grant that you see on the budget under income is directly funding website development and some other marketing initiatives, and the website will launch in October. Merchandise sales will kick off at the gala, and we are beginning to make procurement decision, well, we are making procurement decisions and purchases at this time. We thank you for your generous financial support of our efforts. Your initial contribution provided much-needed startup funds. We will be incurring payments shortly for our two musical groups at our two, first two events, so we hope that you will be able to forward the remainder of your budgeted funds to help us prepare for that. Looking ahead, we'd also ask you to please consider matching or even increasing your support in 2020. We're excited about our plans. We're excited about the enthusiasm that we're seeing. Our committee keeps growing because people want to be a part of this, and so we're, we have really positive feelings about where this is going. Do you have questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the transparency here and letting us know exactly where this money's all going. That's fantastic.
Mr. Mayor, as a liaison to the committee, I'd like at this time to make a motion for us to disburse another $5,000 check during this fiscal year to Callaway 200 Committee.
So we've already committed to that $5,000, right?
We've budgeted it.
We've budgeted it.
We just had not committed to it yet.
And they're asked, are they asking for another five on top of that?
They're asking for more next year.
Next year, okay.
That's not the future, next year.
Make sure I understand it. So I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion on this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. All right, cut him a check. Moving on, the next item on our agenda is council concerns. I'll start to my left tonight. This is just an opportunity for council members to bring up a topic of concern. Councilwoman, say about that.
I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I know there's a lot of things on the agenda that are important to our community, and if we could see this much enthusiasm and participation on a regular basis, it would make our jobs a lot easier. We don't sadly, but tonight, I do just want to thank you for that.
I would echo that as well. It's great to see this.
It is.
In fact, I'm going to take a picture.
Got your phone.
Councilman Sanders, if you have any concerns. Councilwoman Reclu.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilwoman Stone, everybody smile.
Looks like a video to me, Mayor.
I just wanted to acknowledge, the city council went to the Missouri Municipal League Conference, the annual conference, last week, and we had a very large group that went due to the support of the city and the support of the administration here. We were one of the larger groups in terms of representatives of our councils there, and we were, it was known, it was recognized by many of the other communities just how active and involved and engaged of a city council that you have in learning and knowing what's going on in the state and just, just learning as much as we possibly can through the various educational opportunities there. And it was through the support of the city, so thank you.
Yeah, that's always a good chance for us to learn and bounce ideas off of other councils in other cities, and it's a, we have a little fun too, but it's really a great learning time. I'm proud of all of us. That's, that's great. Thank you, Jeff. Councilman Braun.
I am good, thank you.
Councilwoman Pace-Snoke.
I have nothing.
And Councilman Shiverdecker.
Next.
All right. Moving on to resolutions, Councilwoman Seibacher, if you would present resolution number 3352 that was tabled.
And actually, since it's already been presented, and we actually have a motion and a table, or I'm sorry, a motion and a second to move it forward, we just need one to move it off the table if that is your desire.
So if anyone would care to pull that off the table?
I'll make a motion to pull resolution number 3352 off the table for discussion.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. So if, if it's appropriate, if Kyle could refresh us on this a little bit, the need for repairs and improvements.
Do you want to go ahead and just take a quick load on everyone in favor removing it from the table?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you, Courtney.
You're good.
So all those in favor pulling it off the table, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Okay, Courtney.
Thank you very much. We're good.
That's why she's a certified county or city clerk.
All right, everybody. Sewer, inflow and infiltration, and this contract with Viziu Sewer. We, we put out to bid a sewer rehabilitation project. I say project, it's actually items, as you see in your packet. There's, there's a bunch of tools to help prevent stormwater from getting into the sanitary sewer system. If you look at the PowerPoint above, you can kind of see, see a house, you see a stormwater system and the sanitary sewer system and many ways that, that stormwater can make its way into sanitary sewer system. When it does so, it inundates our system, causes overflows, backups. If it makes its way all the way down to the sewer treatment plant, then we're either overwhelmed in the sewer treatment plant or having to process that water down there, which, which costs, costs extra dollars. So we've, we've also been mandated by DNR to tighten up our sanitary sewer system, so there isn't all this dumping into us and we're causing all these backups and, and overflow. So we have, we have some money budgeted to help tackle this. Usually, it's a line item every year, and so the idea was, was to, let's get a contract for any tool that we can use to go out and tackle this issue. The first thing is identifying the problem and figuring out how to fix it, which, which tool to use. So it's camera in a line, sticking a camera in it, seeing what's, seeing what's wrong. If that line's good, check it off the list and go, go upstream and keep moving forward. So, there we go. This is kind of a summary of why we care. Wastewater treatment plant capacity is 8 million gallons a day. When it, when it rains, we exceed 12 million gallons a day. The, we used to have two outfalls into Stinson Creek. One is a big lagoon down by the wastewater treatment plant. DNR has taken that away for water quality reasons in Stinson Creek, so we no longer have that capacity. Like I said, there's basement backups and Stinson Creek water quality. A few years back, we had Burns &amp; McDonald come in and meter the sanitary sewer system and identify the areas that are, that are worse. To no surprise, most of it's in the downtown area. I know this looks like a big glob up here, but we call it our heat map. So what they did is, anything, the darker red is the worst the area is. So again, the big dark red area with a little bit of, with a little bit of orange in the middle is mainly kind of downtown, kind of surrounding area.
So, I'm sorry, Kyle, come back up.
Yeah.
Please. So the red is...
The red is where...
Issued, areas with issues.
Where, yeah, the redder it is, the worse it is. So, site...
For those of us that are colorblind, are there different shades of red on that screen?
There, not, not really. It's zoomed, it's zoomed in a little bit, and there's not a whole lot of color there to distinguish the red, but there is, there are tables that I've got to tell you which red is a little bit worse than the other.
I see two different colors besides...
That's all I see, Jeff, so it's not just you, and I'm not colorblind.
Well, no, I am.
I have, I have a blue shirt on.
Site eight is, is the worst area. It's just, just east of city hall here, kind of between 10th Street, I'll say 10th Street, Business 54, Vine Street on down to Second Street, so all, all that area that, so site eight is the highest ranking area, delivers over 2 million gallons a day to the wastewater treatment plant during rain events, so just that little area alone is a problem. The stars that you see on the map are areas that we've experienced known, known backups or bypasses to the system, so that's, that's what those stars indicate. We also have known basement backups and surcharges. I know in the, in the description, we talked about, I talk about the Burns &amp; McDonald study and the other thing, the other thing that we're trying to tackle or that we're, that we're submitting to you guys, is we have other areas that we've had sewer backup into people's homes. So as I said, the stars indicate where backups have occurred, okay? This area is kind of just south of downtown, along Ravine, kind of bound in between Business 54 and Ravine Street. You see all the stars on there. The, the bigger stars in green are claims that we've had on our insurance that are at least over a couple thousand dollars, so...
Missed a star on Davana.
Got a problem there, do you?
I know I had you on the list. I know I had you on the list. I'm surprised it's not in there. That, this is, I should say, the last, over the last three years, so since '16 and about. So I don't know when your backup was, Jeff.
Before then, thank you.
Another area that we've had several issues is along Randall, kind of all, all along Randall up in there, you see all of the various stars, so, kind of over, a few over there on St. Louis Road, kind of just off of St. Louis Road, Lynn Street, Bradley. This is up, another spot, troublesome spot up there, Meadowlark, Douglas Boulevard. And then we've got kind of just south of St. Eunice Road and east of Bluff Street. So those are the areas that, that we've experienced the back, backups in the last three years, and so we proposed not only that site eight for our I&amp;I metered area that Burns &amp; McDonald did that study on to remediate that worst area that we've got right there, but also these backups. Combining, combining those two, we're looking at 800,000 to a million dollars.
One thing about like the line that's down on Randall, it's behind the houses. It's not out in the street, and lots of the houses down there have put up fences, done landscaping, have buildings back there that were constructed over our sewer line, and if we were, wanted to replace that sewer line by digging, it's going to cause the neighborhood serious stress that I just should not get into. But the method that they're proposing is the contractor goes in through manholes, and they go manhole to manhole, and they, they drag a sock through the... And they, they drag a sock through the, through the sewer main and then they inflate it. And so that's pretty much, there's no digging with it. And the, the new process allows us to do better connections where it comes to the service taps or the service mains that go to the house. And they're able to do some grounding, all additional ways to keep additional stormwater out.
One other, one other thing I'd like to submit too is that the contract with Viziu Sewer is, it's line item based. Essentially, what we would do is issue purchase orders off of those line items. So really, the contract with Viziu Sewer, if you approve that contract with Viziu Sewer, that's not saying, hey, go spend a million dollars. That's, that's, that's not what's in the contract with Viziu Sewer. Okay? So that's, that's just saying, yes, we're going to contract with Viziu Sewer because they were the lowest on all these line items for all the tools that we can use to do it. We would have to come back, come back to you or if, if, if any, anything is over any budgetary amount or not approved tonight, we would have to come back to you to do that. So, you know, we have, I know we have three hundred thousand dollars in the budget for I and I. So, you know, if, if that's what, what the city council prefers to do, let's spend three hundred thousand dollars, not a million dollars, you can still approve. You know, by approving Viziu Sewer's contract, you're not spending a million dollars, okay? You can, you can provide that guidance tonight in meetings to come. So I'd like to issue that.
Kyle, how much of this work could realistically be done before the end of the year? Of, of the entire scope of what you're proposing?
Right now, I can't, I cannot tell you that for sure right now, Jeff. I can tell you that a couple of weeks ago, Viziu Sewer thought that they could, could do all the work by the, by the end of the year. But, you know, that was, that was when they were vying for the job, you know? So, and they, they did strongly say that we would need a purchase order right away to do so. I do not feel at this moment that, that they would be able to do, you know, eight hundred thousand or a million dollars worth. I do not feel.
So we would need to be looking at putting money into next year's budget and be looking at a contract to...
Well, I, I think there should be money in there for years to come in the budget for I and I remediation. As, as you look at that heat map, there's, there's just, there's a lot of clay tile pipe in this town. That's, that's the most prevalent. It's been in the ground for a while. It cracks, you know? So, and as Mr. Johnson said, there's plenty of areas that are, that are in, in behind people's homes and not out in the streets, so it's not very accessible to get to.
Right.
So is this identification or identification and fix?
It's identification and fix. Part of it will be just identification on this first round to get ready for next year's. But we have already identified where a bunch of the basement backups has been. The crews are out there now on root, rootsawing the, the lines just to keep it going. And as, like Kyle said, it's clay. So as your infrastructure's getting older and your roots keep going in, they're getting bigger.
Sure.
And as, and as long as the pipe is in good mechanical strength, they can line it. If you wait till it's not, then you replace it. So it's good in the backyard, like Mr. Johnson said, it's good underneath pavement. We don't have to tear the whole road up. So you're, you're kind of in the, in the same spot you was about twelve years ago with an aging waterline system. And I know several of y'all was on the council back then. And we was fixing leaks all over this town, the gas department fixing leaks, electric, everybody, street department. And, and we're just really not wanting to sort of, to get in that kind of shape. We want it to be reliable. And off the savings, off the rattle, this station, we seen a, a chance to come in here and really do something significant and straighten up the sewer system.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I do think it's worth mentioning that, you know, the city owns the main. We do not own the service. And so there's only so much that we can do, we can fix. We can fix the main, you know, that's our obligation to fix and make sure that, okay, if there's a backup, was it the main's problem or was it the service's problem? Okay? What this is proposing is not a full, you know, there's, there's probably about as much line when you add it all together, pretty close to even amount when you, when you take laterals. So customer lines going to the city main, that's a lot of pipe in the ground. So this is not addressing the pipe that comes from the house to the main. Now, some of this does, there's that connection point, there's a little, little gray area there because there's a connection point, you know, to the main. And one of the items that, that was bid is trying to seal up that connection. But if roots are coming in from the service line, you know, if you, at your house, if you've got a bunch of trees and clay tile pipe and it's coming through your service line, those roots can really infiltrate that pipe and, and get all the way down into the main. So just, we've, we have seen before where we've lined and fixed the main, but there's still a backup because of the service coming into the main. There's so many roots coming into it. So, you know, that's an issue that, that at some point we'll have to touch on.
As part of this project, are there going to be opportunities for y'all to recognize those areas as you get to those and maybe work with the homeowner?
It's, it's our hope that while they're cambering, if they see, you know, a root ball coming out of somebody's service, we would like to notify the homeowner that while they may not already know they're having problems.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Kind of give them a heads up so maybe they can budget and plan for, for getting that repaired. And, and just for everybody's information, we've got about a hundred miles of sewer line in this town. That's about what we've got, footage wise. And a few years ago, we had a lot of brick manholes. We built bricks in this town, so therefore we had brick manholes. We did line those brick manholes and, and stopped some. And over there by Old Jeff City Road is like Region Seven. It's a very small area that was hot on the heat map. And we went and repaired all the point repairs we could in that spot. And then we remetered it and then waited on a rain and we cut about forty-seven percent of it. So it, it, it does not cut a hundred percent out, but we did do a, a test run on Region Seven. And we cut about forty-seven percent out.
Kyle, is there a connection? My apologies.
Oh, go ahead, Jeff. Go ahead.
Is there a, is there a correlation between the work that was done over on Jefferson Street and that, all that drainage and all of that? Has that improved or is that separate? I mean, I know it's connected, but is that type of work? Can we say that that type of work that we're doing on the roads and the drains and all of that is also helping some of this or is it separate?
You know, I can't give you any hard numbers to, to back that up, you know, without doing a, remetering that area.
We did find a mystery pipe in that area. We did fix it, but that was something uncovered during Kyle's street department's work. We found a, I don't know, a French drain of some sort that appeared to be connected.
I just know we're planning a lot of street work also. So I, I'm trying to say that, hey, we're doing a lot of different things to solve this problem.
Well, last year, we cambered and fixed all the spots on the overlay areas. We didn't want, and Kyle's been really great to work with between utilities and, and him. He gives a heads up of what they're looking at overlaying.
Yeah.
And last year, we made an effort to make sure that, we may have to dig it up tomorrow, but we made an effort not to overlay Fifty-four Fourth Street and then wrap the asphalt in, digging up.
Then have to dig it up again, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, John.
So, Kyle, one thing I was going to ask about Jefferson as well, so that was, I can scratch that one. At least I don't have to ask it again. But in your memo, down, down in the last paragraph, please help me understand that. It says, "It is the city's intent to issue an annual purchase order based on the unit prices in this contract for approximately one million dollars pending city council approval." So is that a million dollars a year? That, I mean, that's what I read.
Yeah, I'd say that's a poorly written memo by myself. Because that's, that's, that's not, that's not the intent, no. In the, in the contract that we put out for folks like Viziu Sewer and, and the four others that bid, in order to try to get the best bids that we could, you know, historically, we've been doing about two to three hundred the last several years. And we budgeted for that. So that's what we put, talking with Darrell and, and talking with Bill at that time, we said, let's put two to three hundred thousand dollars in there so these companies know about how much work that they'll have so we can get the best bids that we have. So that's what was advertised to Viziu Sewer and everybody else was two to three hundred. And that's just, just a poorly written memo by myself.
Good man, Kyle. The, the other question I have is on our stars that we have all over town. Those are backup issues, am I correct? The green ones are claims paid. Is that, is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, the green ones are, are claims that were identified, yes.
Do we have a three-year running total for what claims have been paid? I know Bill and I spoke and he told me year to date that we had forty-nine thousand paid. Out of the eighty thousand dollars in claims that were filed, we've paid, the city has paid forty-nine. The insurance is, is the rest of it. So do we have, do we have three-year numbers for the, for what we...
I would have to default to administration or finance to answer that question.
What do you think realistically they can get done work-wise this, this year? Five hundred thousand?
Yeah, late fall, they could probably complete most of it.
And it depends on their scheduling and when they're able to work this in and show up.
So what if we amend this total to the five hundred thousand? And then if they need more next year, we can come back and look at it again.
Well, they're going to have to come back next year anyway.
They're going to have to. Yeah. They're regular next year anyway.
Right.
Just saying, if we decide, if we decide we have the money, we can do more next year, we, we'll do that.
I could agree.
I don't have a problem with that.
Instead of committing a whole million one right now, let's, the year's over half over. So we might be able to use that for something else or some other emergency between now and then, so.
And, and if we've got line item unit pricing, we could even come back later this year if they completed all of that. I mean, you could even bring back again to say, hey, we've still got time, they could do more and we can make that financial decision then also, right?
Right, yes.
That was one thing that was great about his, his bid he put together. This stuff's in the ground. So he needed line item pricing on, on every piece.
Sure.
So if they get in and they happen to just have to line it and have to do a lot of other stuff, we may be able to go further with money. If you get in there and all the services are, was knocked out with a hammer, like some have been, and the pipe just stuck through, then we have a lot of point repairs on the services.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, and, and guys, you know, I know Darrell and, and Anna spent some time and some of my staff spent some time on the phone trying to call other cities and figure out what works for them. And, you know, there's a, there's a lot of tools out there and there's, there's not, you know, any, any great data on, you know, this is the be all and all, you know? So you got to get in there, look at it, identify the problem and then make a selection, selection based upon what's been bid out.
What'd you say?
Grew up in the Randall neighborhood, I understand what that looks like. It's going to take, it's going to take somebody that knows what they're doing to get in there and see.
We're going to go ahead and smoke with our existing crews and do the smoking. And after they finish the section, we're going to put the meter back in. We have four. And then we're going to wait for a, a rain. And Burns and Mack had a lot of different rains. So we're going to try to correlate back to a rain event they had and, and see what we did. That, that's, that's the plan.
Yeah.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to amend this resolution and state the three hundred budgeted plus two hundred. And then if you have anything more, you can bring it back to us later.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second? Sounds reasonable to me. Is there any questions? Is there more discussion on that? If not, I'll call for the question.
Well, I think when they come back again, it would be nice to have an update. You know, for the five hundred thousand, we did this. And it would be nice, thank you.
And they're pretty good about doing that most of the time.
Thank you, Kyle and Darrell both.
Very good. So is there any more discussion going once? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Resolution thirty-three fifty-two has passed. Thank you, guys. Moving on, resolution thirty-three fifty-three. Councilman Moore is not here. I failed to find a replacement for him. Who wants to jump on this one?
I'll be happy to, Mr. Mayor.
I'll be happy to do it.
John, thank you, sir.
A resolu, resolution number thirty-three fifty-three. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to execute a commercial lease with Fulton Area Development Foundation, doing business as Show Me Innovation Center for the lease of the structure known as Five Ten Market Street and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to approve fifty-three, or thirty-three fifty-three with the amended terminology, removing the ninety day and going back to the original.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Do we need clarification on that amendment? It's...
Makes it five, five years.
Yep.
And I think the concern was more or less if you, if they did, did invest, you know, thousands and tens of thousands of dollars in a building, that they wouldn't want to be kicked out in ninety days.
No, just wanted to make sure.
Are there any questions or more discussion on this? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? We have a contract. Thank you, Ms.
Mayor Cannon, I hate to interrupt. I'm, I'm being notified constantly that our streaming is not working.
Oh, okay.
And so Darren and Robert are trying to work on that. I know there are a lot of people trying to watch at home, given all the issues we have going on tonight. They believe if we want to take a quick recess, they might be able to reboot the system, but I will leave that to your discretion.
Perfect. All those in favor taking a recess, please say yes.
Second.
Okay, thank you all for being patient with us. It sounds like we've got our IT issues solved here.
Wonderful.
Where were we?
We are at resolution thirty-three fifty-four.
Okay, and Councilwoman Paesnutt, if you would present this for us?
Yes, resolution number thirty-three fifty-four. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute a contract with Christianson Construction Company of Kingdom City, Missouri for the two thousand nineteen asphalt overlay project at an estimated value of one hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars and to sign all necessary documents in relation to said contract. I make a motion to adopt resolution number thirty-three fifty-four at tonight's council meeting.
Second. And this is our annual overlay program?
Yes, sir. And the funds are coming both from the, to cover the chip seal that the city council approved a month ago and then this project.
Gotcha. So are there any questions on this?
Kyle? Yes, sir.
Okay.
I do have one, Mr. Mayor. On, on our little dollar amount graph, are we going? The overlays don't have any dollar amounts to attach to them on my sheet? Did I just get something?
Yeah, I took, I took those off. The, the, originally, I want to say, last meeting or the one before, I did have values to that, and that was my estimate. My estimate was like, if I remember right, a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars and the bid was a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. So I did not back into, you know, what street was what for, for Christianson, so.
And, and so I guess my question is, is we're going to do the overlays that are on top and then chip seal down to, because it's a running total on the chip seal.
Right. Street, state, where it says state tenth to seventh, that would, that would bring it to about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So a hundred and seventy plus, plus the a hundred and eighty-two gets you, gets you pretty close to our budgetary amount. So we've got three hundred and sixty-five that was budgeted, of that budgeted that we've done some street patching and stuff, so what we have left is about three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So the plan is to not do any, anything over what we have budgeted.
Are there any other questions on this? Not, I'll call for a question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Moving on to resolution thirty-three fifty-five, Councilman Shiverdecker, if you would present this?
Yes, sir. Resolution thirty-three fifty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with River City Construction of Ashland, Missouri, for the construction of a recreation center complex at the bid price of eight million, eight hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, plus city council approve alterations and establish an effective date. I make a motion to adopt thirty-three fifty-five at tonight's meeting.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Where do we start?
Mr. Mayor, I have one. On the actual resolution, there are two sections.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stone.
And I, I would actually like to strike the first, section two.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
And that was the first, section two, so the contingency?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion?
No. That's fine, I can just scroll down to take a quick look at that, I'm sorry. Okay, so that section two talks about the actual securing the funding for the project. So if we strike that?
Then we don't have to make any change to the next section.
Another option would be to call it the next section, section three, and leave that in there. Is that correct?
My motion is to strike it.
Right. Make a discussion here.
Yeah.
Because we do have to figure out how to pay for it, so. And I know we, we, yeah.
Kathy and I spent time together in the packet. Kind of, kind of, the financing's gonna kind of depend on how much you want to use from utilities. We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow afternoon with local banks to discuss the lease purchase. And if there's optimism, it's going.
Okay, well, are we just jumping in?
So we have a motion and a second on the floor about section two, whether or not to leave it in or not.
I would agree to strike it.
Anyone else have a feeling about that?
No.
Okay, I'll call for a question. All those in favor of striking section two, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Okay, the first section two is down. Now we're back to the original motion on the floor to accept the eight point eight-nine million dollar proposal here. Clay?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to share with you a little bit of information about the, the bid process and, and how we came to that, those cost estimates. For the community center, if you take a look on page seventeen of the packet that you have in front of you, for the community center, we came, we got four bids. The lowest bidder retracted their bid the next day due to a calculation error on their part. All the bids came in higher than expected, so we went back to each bidder and we asked them to do some value engineering, come up with some ideas where, where costs could be reduced. Two of the bidders submitted proposals. Those proposals were reviewed by our engineering staff and by the architect. And after review, we determined that there's a potential for maybe three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars worth of savings from that original bid price. That is not indicated on page seventeen. After a contract is awarded, the contractor and the architect would get together and they would come up with an exact price for that savings. Before we did the value engineering and after we did the value engineering, River City was the lowest bid, so they are the lowest bid at this point. Most of you are probably familiar with them, that they've done the state hospital construction recently. And like the resolution reads, that's the company that we're recommending for this project. On August twenty-eighth, the park board met. There's a lot of discussion about the project, the bids. Several council members were there, the mayor was there. After the discussion, the park board approved a recommendation to the council. I'm gonna ask Mr. Shiverdecker to read that recommendation from the park board.
Park board recommendation. At the August twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen park board meeting, the members of the park board unanimously, unanimously approved the following recommendation to the city council for the community center and baseball softball complex projects. The roll call of, the votes was Shane Klein, yes. Craig Sneeden, yes. Jamie A. Strack, yes. Robert Wilson, yes. Jane Hall, yes. Chris Garrett, yes. Wayneville absent, Royce Anderson absent. Six votes affirmative, two members absent.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the project.
Does the, this bid include the furnishings?
The, on page seventeen, the total cost price includes the furnishings, yes. There's an additional fee of, I think it's a hundred and seventy thousand for furnishings and then another forty thousand for the security system.
Thank you.
And then we also have some work that we're expecting that the city's gonna have to incur to, to help finish some things on the project as far as electrical, site work, things like that. Is that correct?
Utilities to the building.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not aware of that at this time.
My, I, I do have some input on it. If we look at, at the four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we're collecting right now, or what they're projected to collect is on taxes, if we look at a fifteen-year loan, the tax alone generates six hundred and thirty, six million three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And if you drew it out to a twenty-year loan, it generates eight million five hundred thousand dollars, just on the tax alone. And, and I don't see, we have eight hundred thousand already, so if we look at, if we add that to the eight hundred or eight million five hundred thousand, we're at nine-two.
You're forgetting the interest.
Yeah.
I, I understand that. I didn't, I'm just saying.
That's gotta be a big part of this.
Okay, it's about eleven million dollars on a nine million dollar. The interest is about eleven million dollars.
About thirty-nine, yep.
Okay, we didn't talk about, when the pro, when the project came about, that the project was ever, ever gonna be one hundred percent self-sufficient. And nothing I can find anywhere, and none of the council members that were on the council told, have been able to tell me, that it was one hundred percent self-sufficient. That's where I asked the city to find, figure out how we can make this thing work. It was a sixty-six percent of the vote went from the people said, sixty-six percent of them said, this is what we want to do. We want to move forward with this half-cent sales tax. And I think we can find it, I think we can make it work.
I need to say something. It might be long-winded, so bear with me. Several years ago, we went to the citizens to ask them to raise their sales tax so we can build several things. A three and a half million dollar rec center, a two million dollar, one and a half million dollar baseball complex, a new swimming pool complex, another splash pad at Carver Park, and a whole bunch of other things is what this four hundred thousand dollars per year was gonna pay for.
Can you show me where that's at? Because no one seems to have that number.
In, in all the literature that was presented, that's what it said.
But no one can produce that for me. I, I have not seen one iota of that. I was not on the council at that point.
Well, neither was I, and.
No one can produce, I haven't seen that.
I was not on the council either. But I, every piece of literature that was presented, every display that was up here in city hall had all that information. That's what was presented to the citizens.
But nobody can produce that for me.
Right, I was just, that was presented to the citizens as what the money could pay for.
Exactly.
Yeah, what, what.
That's what they voted for.
Variety of things that they could pay for. And again, some of those cost estimates and price tags that were put on those things were four years ago.
Well, sure.
When we started that.
A little off.
You know, it's, so things go up.
So we started with a three and a half million dollar rec center. It went to four, to five, to seven point five, and now it's nine plus. The baseball complex is now at six and a half million dollars for the entire complex.
I can't support that, Ballard.
That's what the latest bid showed.
I can't, I'm telling you, I can't support a six and a half million dollar baseball complex.
And you wouldn't get any council member on here to do that.
I can't support that.
So let me, let me finish, please. I said I'm gonna be long-winded. So we have a choice. We can go after a nine million dollar rec center. How do we pay for it? We can take four million dollars out of our emergency utility reserves, which our chief financial officer and our auditors say we shouldn't do, but we can do it. It's not illegal. And then we can do a lease purchase for the rest of the facility, which would essentially entail taking every penny of the sales tax money we're getting every year to pay for the loan for twenty years. This is not a one-year purchase to put ninety thousand dollar lights in on Business Fifty-four. This is a twenty-year commitment that we are gonna make fifteen years from now, a new city council, three years from now, a new city council is gonna have to live with. It's gonna impact our budget every single year for twenty years, but we can do it. Now, a lot of, a lot of numbers that have been thrown out over the years as to operating at costs have been, eh, it's about break even, it's a little less than break even, don't know. We don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know what's gonna happen with the sales tax. Is it gonna go up? Is it gonna go down? We don't know. But we are committing twenty years of this sales tax money to pay for this rec center.
That's what we're.
If we do that, if we do that, there's no money left to build a baseball complex, especially at six and a half million. There's no money left to build a new swimming pool complex, which is now like four to fifteen million from what we saw at the M and L conference. We're not gonna be able to afford a new splash pad. The, be really constrained on any project, any capital improvement project they want to do for a long time.
I think the Parks and Rec Department is aware of that, but the park board is really pushing for us to get started on this project now so that the costs don't increase.
Well, let me finish.
And you also have to remember, we're not committing to a twenty-year-end thing tonight. All we're doing tonight is approving a complex be considered and built.
But somehow we gotta pay for it.
That's all we're doing tonight.
But somehow we gotta pay for it.
Well, but you don't put that in there today. We figure that out after we figure out whether or not we're gonna do this.
If I'm gonna commit to building a nine million dollar facility, before I commit to it, I'm gonna figure out how we're gonna pay for it, okay? I'm not gonna buy, go out and buy a car at home until I figure out how I can pay for it. So that's part of my decision process, is how am I gonna pay for this?
And that's why you've come up with a decision you've already decided.
And it's not, and it's not my money, it's these people's money.
So that's a great.
It's our money, too.
That, that's a great point.
So if, if we decide to build this, this is it. This is all we're gonna be able to build. If we decide not to build it, that's a big deal, too. We'll never be able to build a new rec center, never, ever. It's just, the costs are gonna go up, it's gonna be too expensive, but the money might be able to be used to work on a ball complex, on a swimming pool complex, on something else. So we have to, we have to decide.
The number one survey need was a community rec center.
And that's fine. We just have to understand what we're gonna say. If we wanna say yes, we're committing this city and this council to fund this project for twenty years. If that's what the majority wants to do, you gotta live with it.
And we've been waiting twenty years for something.
Okay. Well, it hasn't happened yet.
And the majority of the citizens. And if we're gonna commit it for twenty years, then let's commit it for twenty years.
But if, but if you don't, if you wanna build it, you're not building anything else.
That's not true.
Well, it, there was, there's no money.
That's your opinion.
Yeah.
That's not true.
I've looked at the money. There's no money.
Councilman Sims, I, I would say that if you would look in the packet on pages nineteen to twenty-one, I offer fourteen different options on either funding the community center only, the community center and the baseball complex in phases, or doing a lease purchase. That's fourteen different options that I come up with. Mr. Johnson came up with six different options. Some of them are, are very favorable to the city. Some of them are tough on the city. I think that's a question that the council will have to decide with the administration.
Well, the one I was proposing looked like the least impact to the city of taking money out of the emergency reserves. That's one of the options that was presented in these packages. We gotta come up with the money somewhere if we're gonna build it.
Okay.
That's the only way we can really do it without impacting the rest of the budget, which we got other things we gotta do.
I, I have a couple solutions. I, I have a couple solutions and a couple things to say. Our Parks and Rec Board is a mass of citizens of this town that are put in place and asked to sit on that board, first off, by the, by our mayors. That's, that's who makes up that park board. Every other park, every, every other board that we rely on to do homework for us comes to us with a suggestion, whether I personally agree with it or not, in the time that I've been on this council, I have never, ever, ever seen it go against any other board. And why should we go against the Parks and Rec Board at this point? There's not a reason why we should go against the Parks and Rec Board. The last thing I'd like to do. The last thing I'd like to do, not, not the last thing, but I'd like to ask a show of hands in the crowd, who is in favor of moving forward with this project? Thank you. I'll ask a question. Who's opposed to this project moving forward? I'll give, I'll give time to somebody else.
And I would just add that, you know, we've, like Jane Hall said, we, we've done some great things for the committee. I mean, we've done a new fire station, new police station, new city hall, new warehouse, new animal shelter, a golf course that brings people to this community. We've done a lot of great things. The city's paid ninety-two percent of that, almost seventeen million dollars of those costs, with no designated funding source. The people of the city approved a funding source. So all we're asking is for twenty-five to thirty-five percent from the city. So that's, that's kinda where we're at. Historically, the city's been able to do some of these things. I think, I think it's possible. Mr. Johnson can add more to that if he doesn't believe it's possible, or if he thinks it's possible. But it's been done historically. There's options to do it. And again, it's up to you guys to decide that.
And I think the people want a rec center. I think they would much prefer a rec center at four-and-a-half million dollars.
We all would.
A pole barn. A pole barn.
Yeah.
Oh, I think it'd look better than a pole barn.
Again, I, I, that's what, that's what we all.
But whatever, that's.
That's what we all.
That's what we're committing to. We're committing to a lot of money, all of the sales tax pretty much going to funding the rec center.
That's what it was for.
If, well, it was for other things too.
No, it was for to fund these projects. That's what it was for.
Okay, and if people just wanna have this one project, that's what we're gonna get.
And, and I'd like to address through your comments about the baseball complex. I know that's the next resolution. That bid that came in at six-and-a-half million.
Yeah.
One, it was invalid because they didn't follow the correct procedures. Two, their, their prices were unreasonably high. And I'll give you just one example. Forty park shelter, they bid that at two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars. I have a thirty-by-forty park shelter bid on my desk with restrooms included for eighty-five thousand.
Okay.
So you can see that those numbers are a little bit skewed. And, you know, they were talking about a million-dollar concession stand. We're not, I'm not gonna ask the council to spend a million dollars on a concession stand. I, I'm not gonna do that. So I, I don't think, the fact that we only got one bid that really wasn't a valid bid, we don't have much to compare it with.
But that's the only bid we had. That's the only number I had to go by.
And, and, and I don't think you can look at that as part of the decision-making process for this. I think, talking about it with the engineering department and things like that, I think the city would be better if we were our own general contractor on the project and did it in phases, where we, we bid out the fence, we bid out the irrigation, we bid out the concession stand. Because we're gonna get a lot more local, smaller contractors bidding on those smaller pieces. I think the project was too complicated, too diverse, for a lot of the local contractors to take on.
And we can do things along the way.
I like that idea.
And, and, and there may be years where the money's not available. And, and you have to take a break and you, you pause on it a little bit.
I think we're getting a pretty good idea of where everybody's at on this. I don't wanna beat a dead horse. But i- if there's anyone that's on the fence still that has questions, please bring them up. If you got concerns, let's talk about them. Now's the time. It's a big deal.
How solid is this, this number, this eight-point-eight million? I understand that we tonight are voting on moving forward.
Right.
So we, we vote and we pass and we move forward. Can we potentially scale that back later to save money? Maybe cut costs in some way. It, it, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money.
And, and we can. And that's, that's why we had the bidders do the value engineering, which, and, and they came up with some good ideas. And we, we took some of those ideas to the architect, and the architect said, hey, yeah, we can do this, but our engineers say we can't do this. So they're not gonna put a lot of work into it until we award the contract. Now, once we award the contract, the River City's gonna sit down with our architect. Our architect's gonna put some work into it. And we're gonna say, okay, maybe if we use this different flooring, we're gonna save this money. Will it save us millions of dollars? Probably not. But it could save us potentially three-hundred to five-hundred thousand dollars.
I see.
So there, there are opportunities for some, some cost reduction.
Very good.
Thank you to the park board for your work. Thank you to Clay, and thank you to everybody else that, that's up here as well on the, on the whole thing.
It's obvious that we're a passionate group.
It's not an easy topic.
We care, we care. Yes, we do.
So is there any more discussion on this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no.
No.
Can you raise your hands if you're a no, please?
Two no's.
Thank you.
Let's build a rec center, guys. We'll find a way to. We'll be talking to you all as we find out more about the financing part of it, how we're gonna make it happen. If you do have some input, we, we would really appreciate it, I think. Does everybody kinda feeling like the four million dollar pulling it out of reserve is where we wanna try to do this? I mean, Bill, we, we don't wanna kill our budget every year.
I'd like to have more discussion on that in a separate meeting. Since we weren't able to have our in-depth workshop session on it.
That's true.
I'd like for us to schedule a special meeting for that.
And it may just be something we could talk about more next week. Cause we're meeting next week again too, so hopefully we'll have more information for you. Very good. Moving on, resolution number thirty-three fifty-six. Councilwoman Rick Riff, you would present this?
Yes. Uh, let me see. Resolution authorizing the mayor, excuse me, resolution number thirty-three fifty-six. Resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the concrete with S and A Equipment and Builders LLC of Fulton, Missouri, for site excavation for a baseball slash softball field complex at the bid price of three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents, plus city council approved all considerations, and establish an effective date and make a motion that resolution number thirty-three fifty-six be adopted at tonight's meeting.
So we have a resolution, uh, motion on the table in a second. So the three hundred would be for strictly the dirt work? Is that correct?
That's correct. The dirt work.
For all four fields?
The dirt work for six fields and the parking lot area. We would, we would not do the total parking lot construction, which at this point would probably just be gravel. I think we'd wait till we get further into the phases to have the parking lot so it doesn't grow up and weeds and things like that. So, yes, it is just for the dirt work of the six fields. And that would be it for phase one.
And Clay, this would also give us opportunity to use that site for other things, potentially as well, right?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be, it'd be a more level site. How usable it'd be, I don't know at that point. We just have to see what it looks like.
I mean, one item I've always brought up is it would make an excellent site for a cross-country trail. Bring in an invitational, be able to sponsor a full cross-country meet in Fulton. And if, with all this cleared out, it'd be a perfect place for that, even, you know, even before we move forward with other things. There's lots of opportunity on that space, once we get the work started.
With the, with the cost of the rec center being more than we had hoped, I, I'm kinda thinking, I'd kinda like to see this one not be approved due to the fact, um, we don't know the total cost of the rec center. We don't know the total cost of the fixtures, what it's gonna take to furnish it. We, there's just still a lot of unknowns associated with the rec center. I, I believe that it's gonna take a city contribution on an annual basis to keep the rec center open. And I, and as far as borrowing money to do the furnishing on the rec center, I just, you know, to, to borrow money on, to pay for an item that's not gonna be depreciating, to, that's something that's gonna be used. And we, without having a dedicated plan of how we're going to pay for the rest of the improvements on the ball field. And we've, within a, a week or so, we're gonna have a dedicated plan on how to pay for the rec center. But it's gonna be more than a few weeks before we come up with a dedicated plan on how to build, on how to build out the ball fields entirely. So the, the money that the Parks and Rec has secured and has in the bank based on the sales tax, I would hope that could be applied to the furnishings of the rec center and to offset some of the, the cost of.
True, true. It's come out that way.
So I'm thinking we don't do the ball fields at this time.
Clay, if we didn't move forward with a ball field complex till, say, twenty-twenty-one, what would the opportunity of doing this work now, what would that give the city? Versus doing this work a year from now?
Um, I think obviously the cost would probably be higher a year from now.
But, but what utilization of the space?
I think, I think what it allows us to do, once we got the, the project started, we can start looking at ways that the city labor can do some of the projects, the, the smaller parts of the project, similar to what we did with the city warehouse. You know, I, I'm confident that my staff could go out and pour concrete and make sidewalks. I'm confident that other departments could contribute things. And a lot of that depends on what their priorities are during the year and things like that. But I think there's some little things that can be done to help get it going. Obviously, you're not gonna realize the revenue until the thing is complete and is up and running. So, yeah, I mean, there's some potential there.
But truly, it would just be piecemealing until we got to a contract for the complex.
Yeah.
Not necessarily other things that we could do with it.
Yeah, and like I said, we.
It's not gonna be a park space. It's not gonna be a dog park until we build complex. It's not gonna be anything like that, correct?
Yeah, I, I don't believe so. I mean, there could be activities held there, but I don't think anything.
But nothing of real significance?
Yeah.
And Clay, you said this would not include the parking lot dirt work?
It, it includes the dirt work for the parking lot, but not the construction. And when I say construction, I mean the gravel, the handicap spots, things like that. So it would just be moving the dirt on that site.
Okay. Be hard to hold events without a parking lot?
Yeah.
It would. And I, and I think the big thing is what it shows is that, you know, obviously the community, like, like Mr. Simmons said, they wanted a lot of different things. They want a baseball complex. They want a, a new aquatic center. They want a community center. We can't, we can't do all three of them. We just don't have the money. I think everybody understands that. But I think it shows that the community that we're committed to working towards that goal of having those things eventually. You know, even if it takes a little bit each year, it shows that we're making progress and we're using their money the way they intended it to be.
Clay, what would be the scoping timeframe of, of, of what we have in the resolution? Is that a one-month project, three-month project?
I think we're giving them eighty days.
Okay, so less than three months.
Yeah, I, I think if you, if we started it this week or next week, you could have it done this year.
Okay.
If they're available.
Depends on the contractor's schedule and, and once we award the contract and things like that, so.
But if we chose to wait, it's, it's not a long time. It, it's not a big proj, it's not a six-month project.
No.
I guess where I'm going is if we waited till next spring to look at something like this.
Yeah, you would, you would just have to.
It'd be a three-month project. Yeah, it'd be different pricing, but it'd be just another three-month project.
It would be. It's, it's a very short project.
So my question is, Clay, is there, with concerns on some of the, the baseball field dirt work, does the bid expire sixty days after it was opened? What is the expiration date of this particular?
Kyle, can you help me on that one? Do you remember what the, was it sixty or ninety days?
Uh, sixty days.
I'd say that's probably right, cause.
That was for the bedroom.
Okay.
Sixty days after the opening. So we're in September. So we would have till approximately October twenty-seventh.
What if we looked at, at tabling this for now and then maybe looked at some alternate ways, like we did with the warehouse facility where we had, we rented a, a machine and used some labor from the city to help move dirt?
Yeah, we do.
We could table this for a little while and see if that's even a, a possibility, or?
If that's a motion, Mr. Sheverdecker, I would gladly second that.
I'll second that.
I would agree with that.
I'll second that.
I assume that was a motion, so.
Yeah, thank you.
We were down that road all.
Yep, I think so too.
And just spitballing here, would, would there be any room to rethink the six ball fields and maybe do two at a time? Where you're not investing half a million dollars in something that's not gonna be used for five or six or seven years? I don't know. Does that make any sense?
From a dirt work perspective, I don't know that it does.
Right. But if we choose not to do the dirt work, maybe we revisit the whole.
I know if you, if you only build two fields, you're not gonna get the competitive teams to come play.
The revenue's not gonna be there.
Yeah, it's.
If, if we wanna stay true to the business model that we have for it, where we wanna attract teams from around the state and we wanna generate revenue, we want it to pay for itself, I think you need to do the fields. Even, even if you have six fields and no grass surrounding them and maybe you don't have your concession up where you want it to be, or maybe all the sidewalks aren't in, I, I think you could start having tournaments. But I think, obviously, the fields are a critical component. And, and you need a large set of fields. You don't need one or two. I mean, you won't attract a lot of teams.
Okay.
All right, well, we have a motion in a second on the floor.
Is there any more discussion on that motion? Not, I'll call for the question to table this. All those in favor say yes?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, do we have to put a date on that, just so it doesn't come back up next meeting? And if, if we don't decide.
It could be pulled off the table until the contract expires.
We can pull it off and put it back on next meeting if we need to.
Okay, thank you.
I think obviously, once the sixty days is up, it's, that window's closed.
That'll give us two more meetings to, to discuss it.
What, what would the council like to see from the Parks Department in the meantime?
On the ball fields?
Yes.
Is that your question?
Yes.
I, speaking for myself, I, I appreciate the, what you're talking about, us being our own contractor, being able to piece this out, look at it chunk by chunk, you know? Not little pieces. We're gonna have to look at big pieces. We're gonna have to look at chunks. But I think we need to get past the next few meetings, get past a few more discussions on the rec center, a few more discussions on, we've got the budget coming up for next year. I think that's what we're looking at, not necessarily anything specific on. I'm not looking for you to provide anything specific on the ball fields in the next couple of meetings. I think we just need to get through the other business at the moment.
Okay.
Well, maybe some alternative ways to move dirt instead of having a bid process to move it? Maybe like we said we were talking about, renting a machine and, and doing some in-house stuff if we can. I realize there's a lot of dirt out there that has to be moved, so.
Hey, does everybody have a shovel?
Jane, can you run a basket? I think is what the mayor was asking.
Very good.
Thank you again to everybody involved.
Thank you, Clay.
So we have a motion on the floor to table thirty-three fifty-six. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? That's tabled. It's not dead, it's just tabled. Okay, moving on to, uh, first read of ordinances. Councilman Braun, if you would present bill number fifteen fifty-six?
Bill number fifteen fifty-six, an ordinance to elect to have violations of the municipal ordinance of the city of Fulton, Missouri, heard and determined by the Associate Circuit Judge of Callaway County, Missouri, and repealing sections thirty-eight dash one, thirty-eight dash three, thirty-eight dash four. thirty-eight dash four, and thirty-eight dash five from the Fulton City Code. I make a motion to move bill fifteen fifty-six for second reading at the next scheduled meeting.
Second. Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor, would someone briefly describe this to our audience?
I'll fill in.
Go ahead.
Okay. So kinda over the course of the past few months, Bill and I have really been taking a look at the municipal court and the functions that it currently handles. We are finding that, as we go along, many municipal courts are being absorbed by their county or by their associate division. And Bill attended a conference where he learned that pretty much within the next three to five years, most municipal courts are gonna be going over to the state level. And that is the, that's the assumption by the state level as well. They wanna take those on so they can really manage it and make sure that it's to the standards that they want. After some changes that have happened really in the past five, ten years, the state's really coming down on those small courts and making sure that they're handling the processes appropriately, and that those processes are transparent and approachable to defendants. So, in turn, that's making this whole process a little more difficult for cities. And basically, we're taking a look at this, we've had Tom Riley, the city attorney, on this matter, take a look at it, to try to find the best way for the city of Fulton to make that move now. And also for the county to also be able to take on the court in the best manner possible as well. So, Bill and I, and Heather, our municipal court clerk, and Mr. Stern, the city's prosecuting attorney, met with the Circuit Clerk's office a couple of weeks ago. It was a very good meeting, they're already aware that we're looking to make this change. They technically can't say no. They don't have the, they don't have the opportunity to deny it, but the meeting overall went very, very well, and they're open to the idea of us coming over there, and actually, they're looking to fast-track this process for us and get this transferred over by January one. Typically, they have up to six months in order to take us on.
It won't pretty much change anything for the police department, they'll still write tickets, tickets will still be submitted. We will still get the fines, we will not get the court costs. When we have to, we will have to change a couple of ordinances in order to make our court fine structure in compliance with the Circuit Court fine structure. I think in the county already, Oz has done it, New Bloomfield's done it, well, Kane has done it, I think.
He's done it, the fine.
I spoke to the administrative animal summit, they are looking at it, they wanna go see how our process goes before they get into it. Many, many towns across the state have already done this. Like, like Courtney said, the conference I went to, the actual state court clerk boss was there and gave the presentation. And she talked about all the rules and all the changes that have been made, and said, just hang on, there's more coming. They wanna, remember some situations that happened a few years ago in St. Louis? That's, that's the driving force in all this. A lot of towns are using their courts as a cash register, and it cannot be said for us, we're a long ways from that, they're wanting to get control.
Very good. Does everyone pretty well understand what we're doing here, good with that? Any questions, comments?
What will come of our existing court clerk?
Sorry?
Our existing court clerk, what will, what will come of her?
We've talked to her, and we will, we will do everything we can to find her a position within the community that does, both meets her qualifications and her desires. And as, with the turnover of staff that we have, I'm pretty confident we'll be able to find something.
Very good, any other comments or questions? If not, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? That bill passes for second reading at our next meeting. And Councilman Simmons, if you would, present bill fifteen fifty-seven?
Yes, sir. Bill number fifteen fifty-seven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Reinhold Electric Incorporated of St. Louis, Missouri, to provide runway and identifier lights, R E I L, at Elton Hensley Memorial Airport, and to sign all necessary documents in relation to the state block agreement pertaining to this project. I recommend we approve bill number fifteen fifty-seven to move to second reading at the next meeting.
Second.
Okay. Kyle, if you would.
Kyle's always in the hot seat.
Getting a workout tonight, sorry about that.
Speaking of hot seat, can we turn the air down? I know it's hot.
Are you cold? Oh, you're warm.
It's warm in here.
We had a lot of people in here today.
We had a lot of people in here, it's so warm.
Yes, sir.
Apparently, it can't go down any further, so we are, we're gonna swivel her in east. Well, thank you for checking. Thank you.
Can you talk about that ordinance, the real lights, a little bit?
Yeah, the real lights, runway eighteen thirty-six is the north-south runway out, out at the airport. These are, these are safety lights out at the airport that are concerning, that we need to get fixed, so. Again, you know, we've talked about this in past meetings, but this project is, the real lights and the hangar project up next are being funded by the, the state via, via an FAA grant that we get on a roll, we get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually as long as the federal government keeps, keeps subsidizing this, this grant, so. We are, we are, our share of it is ten percent, so for the real lights, twenty-eight thousand, we're, we're, you know, twenty-eight hundred bucks or so. We need to spend this, or obligate this, and get it under grant by the end of the month, so. Kind of a big deal that we get it pushed forward.
Thank you, Kyle, we, we hear about real lights, it seems like I have since day one, but this will just be a good thing for us.
Any other questions?
Okay, I have a. Pardon?
I was telling him, don't go far.
Right.
Give him a chair.
So I have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion on this? If not, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? That moves on to second reading. We are back to meeting. Councilman Stone, if you would, fill in for Steve on this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Bill number fifteen fifty-eight.
Bill number fifteen fifty-eight, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with J V A Tion to develop a project plan and development for additional box hangers at Elton Hensley Memorial Airport, and to sign all necessary documents in relation to state block agreement project nineteen dash oh-four oh A dash two. I move that bill number fifteen fifty-eight be moved for second reading at the next scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I know we've talked about this quite a bit, is there anything new to add to this, Kyle, or changes?
Nothing really new, it's for the design and some construction services for the hangers and taxiways that are necessary to, to get aircrafts to those hangers, so. It's for the design and construction services of that, there's really, really nothing else, any, any other questions?
Oh, I do have one, and, and it kind of, they both go together. I, I noticed reading that we've asked for an extension. When do we have to have these done, so we don't have to go to that extension and, and count on the fed, the federal government to extend it as well?
By the end of this month, September thirtieth is when we have to have that.
We'll do the, we'll do the second, third reading on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, perfect.
Very good, I have a motion and a second, are there any other questions or concerns on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Fifteen fifty-eight passes on to next meeting. Okay, moving on to second reads, Councilman Shiverdecker, if you would present fifteen fifty-four?
And if there are no objections, I'll do third reading tonight also. Bill number fifteen fifty-four, an ordinance following the tax rate and levying taxes for the calendar year of two thousand nineteen on all taxable property in the city of Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion that we advance bill fifteen fifty-four for a third reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? That will pass on for third reading tonight, if you would.
Bill number fifteen fifty-four, an ordinance following the tax rate and levy, levying taxes for the calendar year of two thousand nineteen on all taxable property in the city of Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion, we advance bill fifteen fifty-four for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? You've heard bill number fifteen fifty-four presented three times, now we have time for the final consideration. Please answer yes or no, take roll call, Madam Clerk.
Okay, Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
And Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, one absent.
And bill number fifteen fifty-four passed. Moving on, fifteen fifty-five, if you would, Councilwoman Pace Snook?
Yes, bill number fifteen fifty-five, an ordinance adopting the Callaway County Hazard Mitigation Plan for the city of Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place bill number fifteen fifty-five for third reading at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We did hear about this last meeting, were there any concerns or questions on this? Hearing that, I'll, I'll call for the question, all those in favor of bill fifteen fifty-five say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? And if you would, present again?
Bill number fifteen fifty-five, an ordinance adopting the Callaway County Hazard Mitigation Plan for the city of Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place bill number fifteen fifty-five for final passage at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? You've heard bill number fifteen fifty-five presented three times, now's the time for final consideration. Please answer yes or no to the clerk as she reads roll call.
Okay, Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, one absent.
Fifteen fifty-five passed. Moving on to third reading, if you would, Councilwoman Reclu, fifteen fifty-three?
Yes, bill number fifteen fifty-three, an ordinance repealing chapter two administration, article seven, open meetings and records, Fulton City Code, and enacting a new article in there, thereof. I make a motion that adopt resolution number fifteen fifty-three at tonight's meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or concerns on fifteen fifty-three? If not, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? You've heard bill fifteen fifty-three presented three times, now's the time for final consideration. Please answer yes or no as the clerk reads, I will call.
Okay, Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
And Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, one absent.
All right, fifteen fifty-three passes. Moving on to announcements, Council, Madam Clerk, if you would, present those?
Certainly, our next city council meeting will be held Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, at six-thirty P M. And the annual town and country dinner will be held on Thursday, September nineteenth, at five P M, at Callaway Electric Cooperative for those council members and department heads who have R S V P to attend.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna remind the council, at the last meeting that I was present for, there was a flyer passed around about a poverty simulation that's occurring tomorrow evening at Court Street United Methodist, starts at four-thirty. It's a very significant simulation for the community, for anybody who is a community leader, a business owner, or just a member of the community to attend, to get a very good perspective on poverty in our community. And then I wanna remind everybody, as they mentioned with the Callaway Two Hundred Gala that's coming up in November, it is limited tickets, there's only gonna be a certain number of tickets sold for that event, and so I encourage all the council members and community to start planning for that bicentennial event by attending that gala.
Very good. And I'll just say, we did hear a little bit about the town and country dinner this week, sounds like it's gonna be kinda fun, so. Should be a little bit different and entertaining.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, I do not have a need for exact fashion, so we'll take that motion. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?